The sun is actually coming through the slot. You can't close. It's like, you know, between the very top. Thank you. Mayor Wiggins, we're recording.
We call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Mayor Wiggins.
Here.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Davies.
Here.
Councilmember Hecking.
Here.
And Councilmember O'Gorman.
Here.
Everyone is present, thank you.
Thank you. And Pastor Gerald Fair. Is he here this evening? I guess he is. Well, let's rise and all say the invitation. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the privilege that we have in this country to be able to gather and express our views, no matter how differing they are, in a free place, Lord. I just ask that you would go with the people conducting this meeting and be with the council members and bless everyone in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Davies, will you put this in the flag?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. They may be seated. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If a comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item. Staff recommendations are shown in caps. Please turn off all your cell phones for the meeting. Does anyone from the audience wish anything to be removed from the consent agenda? Council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, item number four, please.
Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve consent, item four removed. All seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it, it was a 5-0 vote. Audience written and oral communications. The city council welcomes public comments on any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. We respectfully request that this public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. Persons addressing the council should first state their name and area of residence, the matter of city business to be discussed, and the organization or persons represented within it. Comments directed to an item on the agenda should be made at the time that the item is presented. Questions on non-agenda items directed to the council or staff should first be submitted to the city clerk in written form no later than 12:00 PM on the Wednesday preceding the council meeting. Otherwise, response to the question will be carried over to the next council meeting. No action can be taken by the council on matters not listed on the agenda, except in certain specified circumstances. The council reserves the right to limit the speaking time of individual speakers. Does anyone have any comments from the public, any audience?
Peter Graff, City. Does on the other, no, right side. Peter Graff, City. I'm the attorney. Last week I submitted a request that we heard by city council and it was terminated. It was submitted out, farmed out to a contractor attorney. Is that protocol? Is that something that happens routinely?
I will refer to our attorney.
Oh, yeah, sometimes. Listen, sometimes, is it employment issues or certain my incident? What was that for?
Well, you were asking for an agenda item on a matter that has already been adjudicated in the sense that your right has evaporated. You sat on it and didn't do anything with it.
Well, that's completely false. I just want to talk to my councilperson. There's two at-large persons, one specific to my district. I'll ask those councilpersons. And I was promptly terminated and I'm entitled to a hearing by my employee handbook. And I have all the evidence and all the witnesses I need to help myself remain safe. But I need to know if you, as councilpersons, like you're obligated to do so, can hear my matter. And it's not a man, Madam Mayor, I know, sorry, I'm going to cut you off. It's not a timeframe talk because there's nothing in there restricting me on timeframes. I did the proper letters. It was, I did a written letter and I also did a verbal that day when I spoke to Mr. Greger when he terminated me. So he knows both were terminated as well. In addition to that, he also submitted paperwork to me that says I'm entitled to it. I would like to know when I can have that.
I would like to refer to our personnel attorney to address that at this time.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jay Johnson and I'm an attorney of the district.
Mr. Graff, who down, Madam Mayor?
All right. Just have a seat in front of you.
I'm an attorney and partner of Lever Cassidy with more, it is a labor employment law that specializes in representing public entities such as the city. I've been assigned to represent the departments regarding the termination of Mr. Graff and I was assigned to this matter back in November of 2016 when Mr. Graff was originally terminated. His termination goes back to November 20, 2016, when he was terminated for office. Now, as this council mayor remembers, there was an open session matter where Mr. Graff tried to raise issues of his appeal at that time. I explained to the council that we were in discussions with his attorney and that the council should not make any, hear any evidence or make any determinations regarding the merits of his appeal because ultimately the city council may be the final adjudicators of his appeal. Following his appeal in November of 2016, the city, I represented and offered many dates to Mr. Graff's attorneys. Between November of 2016 and August of 2017, Mr. Graff went through three separate attorneys to represent this matter. The first handed off the matter to another attorney, the second resigned, and the last communications I had for Mr. Graff were in August of 2017 where his attorney said to me, and I quote, "Mr. Graff will lose his appeal," and that he's laboring under the delusion that he can win and that he will continue to win his appeal. After that discussion, I explained to Mr. Graff's attorney to try and see a settlement so that he wouldn't have that appeal. We denied the settlement request, offered a whole view appeal, and we haven't heard anything from Mr. Graff or an attorney until he sent this letter last week for over a year and a half. Under the law, there is a doctrine called latches and there is a doctrine called stoppable. Those doctrines say that someone cannot sit on their rights and allow them to expire. Regarding Mr. Graff's comments about timeframes, the personnel handbook, which was in place at the time that Mr. Graff was an employee, states that the employee wishing for an appeal must make their request in writing no later than 10 calendar days from the date of the department director's decision. Further, the rules for the city state that hearings should be held at a reasonable time. Since November of 2016, we have been trying to get Mr. Graff or his attorney to set a date. We even offered to have it in front of a neutral arbitrator or judge. No date has ever been requested, no date has ever been demanded until last week when Mr. Graff sent his letter. Therefore, as the representative for the department, we believe he has waived his rights and that he's allowed his rights to expire. Furthermore, in my correspondence with Mr. Graff of last week, I asked him for a copy of the written request that he made within 10 days. I've never seen a copy of it. Further, I've asked for documentation showing he's amended the hearing date. To this day, I've not seen any responses from Mr. Graff. Any other questions from the house?
Mr. Graff, is your question, I'm sorry, is your question to be on the agenda? I would recommend that I place you on the agenda. Okay, well, first off, I didn't go through three attorneys myself. The attorneys quit because they were being paid by the Madam Mayor. He can't get a second shot at him.
Well, he's still on a minute and a half.
Everything that he put out there, it simply is not true. It's just that these are words just so that you guys can make a simple decision here. The simple fact is, I didn't get hurt because it was illness, because it was work schedule complex, and this is what you guys kept telling my attorneys. And yes, I did go through three of them, but that's because the union didn't pay them. I was simply just held back because of the poor negotiations of the union. And as far as Mr. Johnson goes, I mean, he just invited me two days ago. He wasn't even attached to this, but all of a sudden he's here. Because all I'm asking for is what Chief Greger gave me inside my exiting packet, and it says on the last one, it's on the back page, the last page, "I'm entitled to my hearing." And as far as the days go, the days were terminated and if you cannot find the paperwork, Tom or Chief, that's not my issue. Because if it wasn't produced to the chief at the time when I was terminated, he would not have put that open hearing on the last page, correct?
No.
That's not correct. So you're saying he made a mistake?
No.
I was offered an open hearing by the chief and that was that, and that's what I signed up for, that's what I gave a piece of paper for, and that's what I gave the verbal for. Chris Kirk was sitting there and Kristi Koenig was sitting there. And so if you want to talk to witnesses, let's start talking to them. I'm entitled to this, and yes, there's been a lot of stuff that got in the way with Ed Seckus and his passing, and then we had the big old, it's a match, 2-1-2 with the council persons. This is ridiculous. I'm entitled to this, and I got to tell you, if you don't give me my rise, you're not representing the city. I'm a citizen. I'm a citizen. I wasn't employed until I was promptly terminated. And even Chief knows, I've gone through those allegations and completely proven them all false. And this is why they don't want to hear. Let me ask you this.
You're out of time.
Okay, that's fine. Let me ask you this. Are you going to hear my matter? Because you're not going to hear my matter, you're not representing us properly.
All I can say is, because this item is not on the agenda, we need to refer it to staff.
Now, let me ask you this. Can I put it on agenda this so that we can discuss it? That's not, I mean, Tom's not in charge. You guys are, you represent us, so you need to act like this. Tom is not the shot caller here. You are. We are asking you what to do, you need to listen to us. I'm asking you, as my mayor, and I'm asking you, Councilman, and you as my representative, Mike as my representative, why can't I have this?
Madam Mayor.
He's not suggesting you don't do it.
I'm not in charge. She's absolutely right. The way you normally handle agenda items is you direct the city manager to put something on the agenda, or you come to him after a meeting and you ask. You could vote to have it put on agenda in the future, if you wanted to vote tonight to do that, but I would not recommend that.
Or if you just let me be a citizen, how much longer does she get to talk to the Madam Mayor?
I'm sorry.
How much longer does she get?
He's out of time.
As long as you are, it's all.
He said, "You're out of time, Mr. Gray." And my answer to you is that we're going to refer it to staff.
What does that mean? I'm sorry.
It means that staff will look into it and advise us. We can't do anything tonight because this isn't on the agenda.
So there's not a councilperson out here that's dead, has enough counsel, that's it, you're going to say, "Why can't we hear this, man?" Not even? Okay, so I'll put it on, I'll put it on the agenda again, I'll request it again, and then we'll go.
You can submit a request to the city manager if you like, but that doesn't mean I'm going on the agenda.
I mean, I'll, I'll go see, but I'm going to request it.
Yeah, I think you already did.
Yeah.
And I'm just requesting it.
And I understand you just don't want the truth to come out, but we're going to get there. Because if these people cannot represent me properly, we'll start recalls on them.
And then we'll start with replacement of seats.
You're out of time, Mr. Gray.
Madam Mayor, my name is Elizabeth Henderson. My middle name or maiden name is Owen. If that's unfamiliar to any of you, and I'm sure it is, my father, my sister is also here, was Kelsey Holmes, who served as a mayor of Tatchee as well as councilman for multiple years and was honored by Kern Cog in 2000 prior to his developing, it's got to be said, Alzheimer's in his passing in 2008. I am here today as an attorney for the state of California and the federal government. I own property here intentionally that is subject to the ordinance that was discussed in the March 4th, 2019 meeting, and I have the following to say. The proposed ordinance, from a constitutional standpoint, must be removed permanently. I have no understanding based on the agenda today if this amount is not on the agenda, is tabled, which means reappear at a later time, or is going to be removed. I strongly recommend to all attorneys present, including the law firm of Lobo Thielen, which also represents the city of Tatchee, that this item be removed. It is unconstitutional. It violates the Bill Rights, the Fourth Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment. The background information provided to us in your report, Chief of Police, indicated that there is a small property group in the city of Tatchee that is responsible for 87.5% of the crime. And yet, your proposal is that every landowner, rental property owner within the city of Tatchee is subject to public search, investigation, requirement to get a business license, but not a business license per se, a business license pending on an inspection by the city of police and the inspectors. A business license, I will not argue with you, multiple cities in the state of California require landlords to have a business license, so let's just get that out of the way. None of them require inspection of the property. Any inspection of that property is unconstitutional and a violation of California and federal law. I would also ask that when you're discussing single dwellings and multiple dwellings, there was no indication, what is the cause of a business license? If a business license is required, where does the money go? Does it go into the city of Tatchee? Does it go to the police department? Because according to everything I've read to date, this is the safest city in Kern County, and it appear that the chief of police has done, and his officers, excuse me, sir, have done an admirable job in containing crime. So my question, please don't interrupt me. My question is, why are you looking at the majority?
You're out of time now.
The mayor said that you're out of time.
I am not out of time. I timed it and I'm not, sir, and Mr. Shorty, you're not the attorney for the city, Lobo Thielen is, and I'm watching him.
No, I'm the attorney for the city.
And Lobo Thielen, that concussion, we're all sorry.
No, they do special work for us.
As is your other attorney.
Excuse me, I am the city attorney.
How many attorneys do you have, sir?
I'm not going to enter into a dialogue with you, ma'am.
Ma'am, you're out of time. I'm really sorry.
Okay, I will finish what I have to say. If this continues, you were falling in the footsteps of Lancaster and Tomdale, which in 2015 were found culpable against violations of state and federal law, as was the Sheriff's Department, as was the county in Los Angeles, subject to multimillion dollar fines against the city, and that's where you're going. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Madam Mayor, to take a second, Tatchee, Madam Mayor, council. I've noticed that because of politics in town and out of town, we were influenced to have five districts. We've had the elections. What my question to the council is, what are each one of you councils and mayor going to do for your district? That's my question.
I assume.
I don't want you to assume. I want you to know what you're going to do.
Well, I try to represent my district to the best of my ability.
How? What are you doing for District Five?
If constituents call me, I will be happy to answer them, to talk with them. I talked to one of them just the other day.
Okay, so you don't have an agenda for what you're really going to do. You're going to sit back and wait for phone calls to come in and then get involved that way? Is that what you're saying, or?
No, I'm not going to get in that dialogue. And I don't know about the rest of the council, but when we were at-large members of the council, we did use the same way to represent our city. We see problems, we report them to city staff, we talk to people, we try and be visible. I'm not sure what you're getting at.
I'm getting at, it was a specific question. What are you going to do for District Five that the people voted you for to represent? You're going to finish our street, you're going to do sidewalks? You know, I need an answer, and this is for all five. And if you don't know right now, I would like to have this as an agenda item, open for topic for the next meeting. Because we've gone away from the at-large, so now we're playing by a different set of rules, and each councillor is responsible for an area of the city. And I would just like to know what you're doing.
Sir, I was elected at-large, so I represent the whole city. So I am at-large. I have, I'm on Facebook, I have people calling me all the time, they talk to me, I call the city manager, I ask questions, I bring them up. When people ask me concerns about stuff, I find out. I talk to the city manager, I went to, spent three days at ethics class, finding out what the proper procedure is when somebody asks me. So if you go on my Facebook page, people see me on the street, I'm very active in this community, I volunteer, many things, I'm with the Sheriff's Department. I have people come to me all the time and ask me questions, what we're going to do about this. I'm wearing a flag shirt tonight. I'm representing the city, I'm representing the citizens of Tatchee about the flag. So I take to heart what, when people come to me and ask me what I'm going to do about the city. Once people ask me to do something, I'm on the phone.
Okay, I understand that. But none of you have come up with, "I'm going to do this for my area." You elected me, and this is what I'm going to do for the electors.
Are you referring to our platform for our campaign? Is that?
Yeah. You were elected for a reason, and now it seems like nobody understands what the reason was.
Well, my reasoning was to clean up my neighborhood or my district, to help the senior citizens and get more activities for senior citizens and housing.
How well is that going?
We're working on it. We can only do a little bit of.
Are you really working on it, or are you just trying to put me out?
No, we have Capitol Hill's development coming, we have several.
Capitol Hills, that's not the city.
No, yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
It is.
Capitol Hills is a city.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and sir, I'm really sorry, but you're out of time.
Okay. So are we going to be on an agenda next meeting so we can discuss this further, and maybe you folks will have time to come up with some hardcore answers for how you're going to represent us per district?
Could I come in, sir?
You sure can.
You're asking us to basically run for office in the term of 30 minutes in a city council meeting, all over again. We all represent our districts, but at the same time.
I don't want you to rerun. I want you to.
No, no, please don't interrupt me, Jim. I couldn't interrupt you, sir. Right? You're asking us a very broad question. What are we doing for our district? Every one of us would like to have curves gutters, everything repaired, with the limits that we got with our money. There's never enough money. And keep our city safe. The most important things are safety, fire response, those kind of basic things. We all want to, when the water, when you turn your tap on, the water comes out, when you flush your toilet, it flushes. If we have any money left over, we would like our streets repaired, it goes down the line. Any one of us, if you were on here, Jim, you'd be saying, "I want my streets repaired, I want police officers, and I would like to have the city looking nice." All those things that encompass everything. And probably 90% of our work and things that we do are outside this meeting.
That's true, but I don't see what's happening in my district. I'm concerned about my district.
Okay, did you, okay, if you have a specific concern, or is that just a broad concern?
It's a broad stroke. You know, if you want specifics, I can write them down in the.
No, 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 I'm just saying, you know, this is something you have over a cup of coffee with your, with any one of us. It doesn't, I'm not sure if I'm in your district or you're representative.
In our ways.
You know, this is a, this is a thing that you would, have a group of your folks say, "Can we meet with Mayor Wiggins?" You know, and these are our concerns, and we feel they're not being addressed.
Okay, that's an actual point.
I think that's a better venue than, "What are you guys going to do?" And then we're up here grandstanding, "Oh, we want this, we want that." But I would prefer a setting where you can say, "Ms. Wiggins, you're not doing your job. I want this and this and this." And our job is to collectively try to meet your demands and the demands of the other district and the, and the city as a whole.
I like that.
And I don't think we're up here as pompous people that just want to be here. I'd ask anyone in the audience if they would like to take my place. You know, I'm not sure. Anyway.
But sir, I'm really, I'm really sorry that you're out of time.
We have an obligation to all the residents. No matter if it's my district or not, you know, I would love, you know, we can't battle district by district. That's just representation, and that's just the way the state law came out and we're abiding by it, all right? But I would recommend, and if you would like to meet with your representative, fine, or if you've got specific things that we're not doing, come, hold our feet to the fire and say, "Council, you've promised this and on this item here, and we need more action." Or something like that. But just to have a broad discretion in a council meeting, what do I feel is great? In my district, he might have a different priority over in Jones.
Of course.
This might be different. But it doesn't keep you from approaching us on the street, over coffee, I would meet with you happily anytime.
So would you all be open to an open forum where each district represents and has their own meeting with their people?
We actually have that. We have coffee with the mayor.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about you specifically, each one of you five.
I don't mind.
Have your own meeting to talk with your people in your district.
I don't mind that at all.
I don't mind either.
I think that will help the city at large, because now we come here to the meetings and there's arguments, there's differing, the attorney jumps in when I don't believe he should, you try to gallop the people to shut them up because they're out of line. We're just, we're missing the point here. You represent us as life officials.
Absolutely.
And I see no issue with you telling me specifically, "In my district five, these are what I'd like to see improved." Or one, two, three, or four. It doesn't make a difference which one.
And this is not just for you, this is for everybody in the audience as well. On the third Thursday of each month, we have coffee with the mayor at 7:30 in the morning at the coffee mill. And you can go in and it's a casual atmosphere, there's no intimidation, da-da-da-da, it's very friendly. And you can express what you want or what you feel, or ask people what you want or what you feel. And that's acceptable and it's in a friendly atmosphere, and there's no bickering and arguing and arms up and the whole nine yards.
I would like my representative to come to me.
That's been a real negative, too.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I would like our representatives to come out to the people. Don't make us come here. Don't have us go to the coffee shop. Come to us. We put you in office. Come talk to us. That's all I want. Come talk to us.
Call me.
No, that's not what I'm asking.
You heard your phone number.
Okay, thank you.
Any other public comments?
Michael Bigley, San Canyon. I'm just wondering, in your closed session here, items two and three are not related. This is the second closed session meeting where you discussed a claim against Ken Hippy, or Ken Hippy filed a claim against the city. As far as I know, he has not filed a claim against the city. Councilman Hippy filed a claim against the city of Tatchee?
No, I had none.
So if two and three are not related, I believe that three should read the same as two, anticipated for possible litigation, as there is no claim against the city for Ken Hippy. Is, one question for the mayor. Do we have Sergeant Barnes in these meetings?
No, we don't.
I would suggest you.
You have, I have the police chief.
That's why I need Sergeant Barnes, because I'm talking now, and the police chief, the Sergeant Barnes, he should conduct what's going on in these meetings, nobody else. Because everybody else tends to disrupt the meeting when they speak out of turn without asking. So I would suggest that we make the chief Sergeant Barnes, because he is respected in the firm. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Hello, Lance, Tatchee. And I'm here just to ask a question in regards to the ordinance 8.68 in regards to the code enforcement of business license. And I keep hearing with all my phone conversations that it's been taken. And I keep hearing with all my phone conversations, that it's been taped or it's pulled, and I'm not sure what is it that this ordinance is, the position that it is in at this point. Does anybody have a statement in regards to what it is going to be, and if it's truly gone, or if it is going to come back again? And if it is, we need to be aware of it, us, those who are concerned about it, and not a part of the group of, "Yeah, y'all right, this is the perfect thing for Tatchee", for those who are not within that group, to be able to know what's going on and have even more input than we have had in the last couple of weeks, and continue on, and try to have our input. So instead of just, "Yeah, we're all for it", because we're not all for this, guys, and there's multiple problems with this particular code enforcement. So any comments in regards to whether it's taped, pulled?
Yes, the city manager will answer your question.
Good question, thank you. That's what the city council meetings are all about. We want to hear from the public. And we heard from you, and we heard from the city council, and the city council directed us to put it on indefinite hold. But doesn't mean we're going to bring it back next week, or in a year or more, who knows? The staff researched it, with the research that we had done, completed with other communities, it seemed to work well for them. They thought it was a good idea. The democratic process through this public meeting said, "No, we don't want it in Tatchee." So it hasn't shown, so we have no plans at all to bring it back at this point at all. And so we value your comments, that's how this process works. It's a great democratic American process. And sometimes the council just says no, the community says no, we heard it out in Clare. You said no, so it's off the table.
Thank you very much. And just in regards to what the other gentleman had to say, I know you have a little group, I shouldn't say little, because some are very big, but meetings where people can discuss, is there any other forum where things like this come about, that the average person that isn't available to go to those meetings, those little gatherings, can have input before something ends up happening?
I would be happy to answer that also. So we have, the Tatchee News, and they report things regularly, which we appreciate. We have all of our social media, we push items out. We do have coffee with the mayor, that Mayor Bryans and I set up sometime ago, it's been very beneficial. We have a planning commission, which is a very useful tool, we have city council, and we have all of us, city council and staff. I'm consistently begging people to call me, to write me an email, I will come to you, whatever you like. I want to make sure that you have the data and the facts. It's very dangerous for people to fill in the blanks. We hear quite often people filling in the blanks on social media, filling in the blanks at the podium, for example. That's unhealthy. This forum is to discuss, debate, and decide the future of our great city. So call me, please, I'll come to you, you can come to me, but we have lots of different venues, and if you can think of a different venue, I'm all ears.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And as a very vested person within this community with businesses and rentals, I have a great deal of alarm when it is supposed to be the city of Tatchee, and it appears to me that for some way we are becoming a gated community, with a homeowners association type ruling and guidelines that are happening, with everything needs to be beautiful and pretty and fit within one concept. We're a great variety of buildings and creations and businesses and business owners and property owners, and I hate us to just end up becoming just another city, just what everybody else is, instead of being the city of Tatchee.
May I?
Yes.
That's exactly the same page that city staff and council is on. No offense to our neighboring states, east-west, north-south, but they have deteriorated in the last 10, 20 years. I've heard some people come to the podium recently and say, "I grew up here." Well, you grew up here, and I know that you know about Mojave and California City, and Arben, and Lancaster and Palmdale, and no offense to Angeles, but these great people live there, but we cannot go down that same road. And so we're always trying to put tools in our tool chest that will not let that happen in our amazing city.
Tools to be worked with.
Correct.
Not just hammered down.
No, for sure. And I apologize, really, I really apologize, that was not the intent. We were, let's say, naive enough to think that everybody was going to embrace us. We didn't do enough homework. And so we heard you loud and clear.
Thank you. Don't make this leak everywhere in USA.
It's not, it's Tatchee, and it is holding its own. When you look at the communities around us, we are far and apart from what they are. And again, no offense to any of them, the people that live there, the people that run the cities, they have all of their, their own challenges. And they have council meetings very similar to ours. People get passionate about their town, and we're all passionate about our town, that's why we're here.
Very passionate about this town, even though sometimes we remain quiet. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public?
Good evening. Thanks, Capes. Citizen, resident, business owner here in Tatchee. You'll see a brief little article coming up in the Tatchee News here. And council members, you all receive the same letter. The letter has no intention to deteriorate or degrade the respect that you guys have earned within this community. And I thank you, you do not have an easy job. This letter was written with real concern. And I think the fact of the matter is, the concerns coming from the safety portion, they really don't give the vols to us. You know, a lot of people don't actually see the crime that's out there. And so I respect you and commend you for going after the crime. Coming into my backyard and searching into businesses I'm not too fond of, but, you know, I can work with it. And I'd really love to be a part, as much as possible, of any of the meetings going on, the group sessions, if I can, can work it into my work schedule. Are there any other opportunities for us to get together, regular members of the community to speak with you guys? You know, if you're proposing the ordinances or potential changes, can we ever get together and actually talk about what's really going to work, what's not, different people's views? None of us think completely alike, District 5 versus 4, I mean, is what it is. But I don't specifically look at social media. My wife does. Every once in a while I can see one of those pop up on Facebook or whatever, and for me it's all this nonsense. Half the time people are slandering, whatever, I don't care about that. I do read the news. Can we make it, you know, a little more obvious, maybe in the Tatchee News or the Loop, or have a little more community outreach and say, "Hey, City of Tatchee, come on over, let's have a talk, maybe a brunch or something, or maybe a dinner, where we can talk and actually ask these questions, so we don't waste your time here." You have a lot of business to carry out. I have a lot of questions, I don't feel the time, but I'd like to, you know, discuss things with you guys. And it's not just me, it's other community members as well. We all come from different backgrounds, different heritage, families, and we're all here for a reason. We love this community, we want it to be safe, we want it to look promising, we want people to come here, spend their money. My personal opinion is, after you spend your money here with the local businesses, go home. But, you know, that's, it is what it is. And all in all, with everything that's going on, I respect you guys, and thank you for what you do. I'd just really like to have an opportunity that's more available to citizens to actually communicate with you guys. And tell me thanks, I mean, you deserve your thanks, right? Chief Kroger here, basketball coach, we got another referee all the time, Phil Smith, Josh Stone, everything, this week. I mean, come on, all you guys are valued community members. So if you can, maybe work towards putting something a little bit bigger in the paper. I'm starting to need glasses, so I'd like to see that. You know, I'd like to have some of my younger group, my generation, you know, a little more involved, you know? We all have different ideals and different values, but thank you for what you do. And no means is this a disrespectful letter to any of you, and thank you for your hard work and dedication.
Thank you.
Just a comment, you're never wasting our time up here. This is your time.
Thank you.
Okay, this is the citizen's time, whether it's in here or, and if it's a, I remember years ago, they wanted to put a street over Mill Street, an overpass, straight up through, and boy, the neighbors let me know. We had a pow-wow of all the people on Mill Street and figured out a way that, you know, that's not going to work. So anyway, those little sessions, like, absolutely work.
Well, thank you for sharing that, and that's what I'd like to work towards, because there are a lot of things in this community that will totally benefit what we're doing here. I want my little boys to grow up with all the advantages that I have here within the community, the school district, and all the family and friends. And I don't want Chief over here to keep us all safe in the meantime, you know? I love the fact that I can call his department anytime and they're there like that, for any reason. So thank you, and yeah, if you could make that a little more obvious for people with me who don't have the social media, I would really appreciate it. If I need to put some funds in there for it, let me know.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is George Sandy. I'm a resident here since 1988. And I want to talk to the audience for a minute, and I want to ask if any of you folks out there would ever think of taking a position like these five council people here, their people just as common as the rest of us, and why they volunteered to sit up here and handle this kind of an audience at times, and, and the great bats, and the compliments, which hopefully offset that a little bit. But what I'd like to suggest is that the city, think about for a minute, about these folks, every one of them never had to do this job, and why they volunteered to do it is beyond me, because I would never put myself in that spot, maybe for two reasons. One is I don't have the finesse in the brains, and I don't think I do. And I think these folks do, because they're all sitting there because we stood up and voted for them. And then we voted for him, and him, and her, and him and her, this mixed group. Why ask a question of them, what they're going to do for us? They've already done, they volunteered, they worked hard to get on the council, and they truly want to represent those people. And I for one feel, I've been very well represented here, and I would like the audience to perhaps observe a little proper protocol and respect, because I respect you, and I highly respect you, and taken on this voluntary job. And as far as the city staff, I for one think they're doing an exemplary job, and I am one of the citizens that keep an eye on everything. And I spend a lot of time watching and observing, and I have nothing but praise for the city staff. And on present account, they're doing a great job. And they're not going to come to us to ask us if we have a problem. I, as a citizen, want to go to the district person that represents me, and I'll outline my problems and hope that he'll have the heart to take me seriously. And in all cases, I've never heard, I've never heard somebody say, "Take a walk, I'm not interested." So we have a good council, we have a good city staff, and I want everybody to please recognize that, even though you have differences at times. Differences are fine, that's the way the government runs, but come up with some beneficial ideas at the same time you criticize these people. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? If not, we're going to move on to item four.
Two.
Two. I'm sorry, I'm going to go first. The woman who had requested that we do a proclamation for multiple sclerosis awareness month was unable to be here tonight. But we do have the proclamation, and we will make sure that she gets us, and we want to have everyone remember that this is eventually a fatal disease, and much more research is needed to take care of it. So I'm sorry she wasn't able to be here. All right, item four, Mr. Henke.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three different questions pertaining to the check register this month. The first item is on page number 12 pertaining to payments of, well, cumulatively over the last couple of months, we've spent $27,300 on outside legal services. This particular charge on Richard Watson and Gershon, I'd just like to have an explanation of what that outside legal service was for, and, you know, is that, well, let's just leave it at that, what was that outside legal service for Richard Watson and Gershon? The amount of $3,538.
The invoice was for the United States of America versus the state of California for the sanctuary city, thank you, sanctuary city. FPPC advice for Mr. Henke and Mr. Davis. Wireless telecommunications, AT&amp;T, the specific, the cell tower, the 5G, information that we've been seeking. Taxiway relocation, Mr. Henke's harassment allegations, cannabis, and sidewalk behavior.
Okay, great, thank you on that one. On page 13, charges from AECOM for the amount of $5,411. Do we, do we know, and I realize what the check register says, but do we know if any of these charges are associated with AECOM subbing out services to outside entities, and then we get billed for those entities? Or is this a straight-on AECOM charge?
Those are from my department, and each of these are straight for AECOM service. In fact, I don't know of any of the activities we're doing with AECOM being subbed to somebody else. The first two bills were, the smaller amounts were for minor mapping services, they do drafting services, this is, I do have a general services budget with them, that is part of the food budget, and when I need an uptake for an ADAS map, I'll have them do that. The larger $2,000 invoice amount was an annual wastewater report that is required by the state of California, they provide. And then the final large amount was a capital project, an RCD project that we've been working on, they're the selected designer of that project. So none of these services were subbed, they're all AECOM personnel out of there.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the final charge was, again on page 13, from Provost in Pritchard, and this was for the Capitol Hills specific plan. I was under the impression that all of the Capitol Hills specific plan, the revisiting, the alterations to that plan were all going to be resubmitted or submitted back to the high-speed rail for reimbursement, is this...
So absolutely, yes. We must pay our consultants, high-speed rail, and it reimburses us. And they're up to date with their reimbursement.
Great, so this $2,093 will come back from what's left of the high-speed rail entity?
Straight in, straight out.
Okay, great. And I don't have any other questions on that, so I will make a motion that we approve item number four, as presented by Seth.
Do I have a second? Hold on a second. Hold on a second. Who didn't second it as presented? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Let the record show it was a five-zero vote. Number five, disbursements and bills for RSI Petroleum for February 26, 2019 through March 11, 2019.
Madam Mayor, I need to recuse myself of unemployed RSI Petroleum.
Any questions concerning this? I've been waiting for the bird to shut away.
I'll make a motion that we pay that bill due our... As presented by staff.
Do I have a second?
Hold on a second.
Who didn't second it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a four-zero vote, with Mr. Davies recusing himself. Number six, Development Services Director.
Madam Mayor, council members, the first item I have for you tonight is an amendment to our engineering services agreement with AECom Technical Services Incorporated. As you guys know, we've been on and off in a relationship with AECom to provide civil engineering services for the city of Tatchee for well over a decade now. And for instance, we just discussed some bills for some miscellaneous work that they were doing for us. In this case, staff sought an amendment to the agreement that we have with AECom so that we might be able to utilize their services for plan check purposes, for engineering, civil engineering plan check purposes, for development-related work on an on-call basis. My reasoning is this, it's in the taxpayer's best interest. So, we're, the economy's good, and when the economy's good, my department ends up typically receiving more, you know, development desires from landowners within the city that require us to keep up with making sure that things are designed correctly, doing that plan check to make sure that when they go to construction, they're building in accordance with our standards. And instead of hiring new staff members that then, when the economy turns down, are very, you know, can be kind of complicated from a budgeting standpoint, we recommend that we bring on an on-call agreement of this nature so that if I've got just too much plan check on my desk, but I gotta keep things moving, that I can call in. This is a service that was in place back in the last upswing of the economy in '04, '05, '06, '07, and it worked very well. So, the proposed amendment seeks to add engineering review and processing of plan check services. And here's the really nice feature, too, AECom has agreed that they can provide those services at the same cost that city staff provides those services to the public, so the developer would not see a difference in expense between the two. And so they provided the fee schedule, which we've included in your packet. So therefore, my recommendation is that you approve and authorize the mayor to sign the amendment to the engineering services agreement between the city of Tatchee and AECom Technical Services Incorporated to provide an engineers to review and processing of plan check services and subdivision plans in support of city needs in cases determined to be appropriated by the city staff. Do you have any answer any questions?
Any questions on this from the audience? Counsel?
Yes, I do.
Oh, sir.
Sorry. Just got my answer, I need to repeat it.
Yeah.
Okay, city of Tatchee, resident, blah, 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 yeah, yeah, yeah. What's the actual cost to have to hire a full-time representative for the engineering and et cetera, as you were...
Any other questions, or should I?
Start with that one.
Go ahead.
Would you like me? Okay. It depends on the type of employee that you hire, but if I were to hire, for instance, an unlicensed engineer or an EIT, the cost to the city would be about $100 to $10,000 a year.
And this proposal is actually going to add to how much rate with the proposed development opportunities that are coming to Tatchee?
Well, I don't know, because it depends on how much development comes in the door. But to answer the question, this is reimbursed by the developer, so there's no cost to the taxpayer. There would be, there's no cost to the taxpayer. So these are development fees that developer pays the city to perform plan check services, and I just need the extra staff to deal with the work. And so instead of hiring somebody that, that maybe two years from now, the economy changes and I no longer have income coming into sport, and now the general fund is paying instead of the developer, this way when I add extra work, I can send it to them, and then if the work dries up, I just don't send anything to them, and that way the taxpayer is protected.
Okay, so this will be interim position, the consultant position, to manage any of the developers' ideas?
So this, and this is simply on-call. So as Jay's staff's workload is more than they can handle to respond to a request in a timely manner, we would hire AECom on an hour by elevates, no strings attached to it.
Okay.
So they would just do one thing for us, and that's it, we're done.
Perfect. And the costs in here, are these actually like per-hour rates, or are these, you know, for storm drain improvement plans, I'm gonna charge you 503 overtime?
What was the, what exactly?
So my question is, so are we paying them per hour? Because this is gonna come out of the taxpayers' office, right?
No, 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 no. This is not, nobody in this room pays.
Well, wait, wait. Okay, so when he brings in another individual?
No, no.
The developer to do the work, when he brings in, because he's gotta have a consultant to handle that form of business, right? The developer who's actually gonna be doing this ends up paying that guy?
They pay him?
No, no, no. This is to hire an engineer on-call to do plan check services.
Right.
Period.
Okay.
So if somebody wants to build something in the city of Tatchee, whether it's a patio cover or a Walmart supercenter, they must submit plans to the city.
Right.
Right? So we can issue the document to do the work. This would allow Jay's team the flexibility of obtaining help by the hour. So if his workload is too high, we don't want to slow you down, we pick up the phone, we call AECom, we send the plans to them, they can find them, and they're charged the same rate as if a city employee did the work.
Okay.
Nothing to do with building anything.
Yeah, but who pays them?
Who pays who?
Who pays that person you're bringing in to be the engineer?
The applicant.
The applicant?
The applicant.
The applicant. Okay, so in those rates, so if I went to build a patio, it's $200, I gotta pay him to...
We still charge you. The city of Tatchee is not free.
Right.
We charge the applicant for the service. This is just augmenting our staff, that's all.
Right. He's busy, I got like 15 things to do over here, so now instead of working directly with you, I'm working...
No, you're not, you're still working with Jay.
Working with Jay.
Absolutely. It's, it's...
But I'm paying him.
No, you're paying the city.
What if we say it's the city?
I'm confused.
May I?
Yes.
Yeah, it's too complicated. If you're gonna build a patio cover, it's X amount of dollars. Just say 200.
Right.
The city gets that, you pay the city. Whether our engineering staffs got plenty of time to handle it, they write it, they stamp it. Or if we're full, we'll have AECom, it's still 200 bucks to you. But the general fund, the taxpayers, aren't all paying that, though.
Yeah, okay.
Or if it's a big developer with a big tract at home, the developer's paying that, why should those taxpayers, the new taxpayers, pay for that? Right?
I'm just confused because, sorry, and I'm not trying to interrupt, I'm just confused because of when I manage my budgets, you know, with my business, and I'm dealing with millions upon billions of dollars, and I'm hiring consultants and contractors, you know, I mean, there's a lot of ways you can play the money, and a lot of ways that things go on. So I was really wondering, who pays who? How the money gets dispersed? And are these the actual rates per hour, or are they the rate per tax? Or not? Tax?
Tax.
Tax. So...
You're running out, you're out of time, sir.
Thank you.
Can I, can I sit with you, maybe? Yes, I'd love to. You need to understand the process is quite simple.
Yeah, perfect.
Excuse me, I just have one question.
I need you to stay here for the record.
I apologize. Elizabeth Henderson, attorney, from Baker's Steel Property, our in Tatchee. My husband is a civil engineer. He's licensed. What purpose is it to hire a unlicensed civil engineer, sir?
You said unlicensed civil engineer. All engineers begin unlicensed.
And when do they get their license? My husband had his registration within six months to a year.
Then, well, I don't have to know when he received his license, that's not the current...
He's had it since 1972, sir.
Would you like to answer the question?
Yeah, I can answer, oh, a person who writes in here, an unlicensed engineer.
All engineers start unlicensed, out of school, when they receive their degree.
Yeah.
And they are required in the state of California to practice under a licensed engineer for a minimum of two years before they're qualified to take the professional engineer's exam, at which point they pass the exam and become a licensed engineer. It is traditional, especially for plan check, which is not complicated civil engineering, unlicensed viewer engineers typically perform that work. So the gentleman who came up before offered a hypothetical to me about what it would cost us to bring in an individual, and so I hypothetically answered that I would, to provide an answer, hire a young new engineer to perform that work who would be unlicensed. That's how all engineers start their work. So I don't know what your husband's experience from 1972 is, perhaps the rules with licensure were different back then. I've had my license since 2003, and the process has always been the same. You always start unlicensed, you work for an engineering firm or for other engineers, and then become licensed.
Have you served as an engineer?
Yes, ma'am.
And the unlicensed attorney would run that in, sir?
Well, I'm not proposing to hire an unlicensed engineer, so...
I'm just saying that.
No, he presented a hypothetical, and I provided a hypothetical response. The city has no interest in hiring an unlicensed engineer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Henderson, I'm a faculty over here at Tatchee, and I am a licensed civil engineer.
I've seen your name on lots of plans, haven't I?
I've been around a long time. But actually, I started with the city when I graduated, after I graduated, I worked for the state of California, worked on these freeways here, very... After I graduated, there was a freeze on in the state, so I worked for the city of Baker's. I was unlicensed at that time. It was not two years before I was licensed, so I was licensed in 1974. But I used to go all the plan checking for the city Baker's, remember walking in there? It was about 18, 20 inches of paperwork on top of the desk I was gonna sit at. And so he said, "This is much fun to take on here as a city engineer." So, handed me a book of each standard details and said, "Yeah, we had all the plan checking to do on that." And I was in the early '70s, I was a fool, you know, most of the Southwest Baker's did. I was there for three years, most of that was meant for me when I was there. But it was, you know, we just basically did development engineering stuff. We were doing all your streets, water and sewers, grading, and so kinds of things for developers. That's what I did. I would do occasional streets for the city or tennis courts, a few other things we designed there. But I'm, I'm gonna ask you, Jay, what are your duties? I mean, are you also handling building, or do you just handle development and city project and service?
I'm the Development Services Director. I manage the Development Services Department, which maintains engineering, building, and planning departments for the city of Tatchee. The total staff of the department is seven, does that sound predatory? Well, my staff includes myself. I'm also the city engineer by license. I have another engineer on staff who is recently licensed civil engineer in the engineering department handling capital projects. I have a planner on staff who provides the bulk of the planning work. And then we have a building inspector, and a public works inspector, and then two office administrative personnel. So my duties include managing the department, being the city engineer, managing capital projects, managing the planning department, overseeing the building department, and then any other special project they're ready to use.
Okay, yeah, I mean, basically, we did it differently when I was there. We had building department, we decided from, we had checkhold pad, bars and racks, all the development, and the city projects, and I had this separate planning department and stuff also. All of that's under you, where that would've been all of the city manager, the city engineer took care of, just development. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions regarding this?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions. I noticed that there's a turn time in here, roughly 10 days per turn on the submittal, the outsourcing, the return, a subsequent submittal, another outsourcing, another return. So cumulatively, a contractor that's trying to build something could suffer, you know, a minimum if the process came back and forth several times, 30 days of not being on the site and working towards the conclusion of their project. And 30 days when you're working within a tight budget can sometimes impact your budget, and it can increase it dramatically. And I am, I'm a little bit concerned with that turn time on the, on the language associated with this particular contract. And then I have a question for the city manager. Do we currently have anybody on our staff that has worked for AECom or oil engineering in the past?
Nope. I'll take the second question first, and the answer's yes, says Jay. We stole him from AECom, well, he's an amazing employee, but we're very lucky to have him.
Okay, Mr. Schroeder, I feel that we could potentially have a conflict of interest due to the fact that we have a staff member who had been previously employed by AECom recommending to council that we have, that they approve a recommendation of proceeding with this contract. So I think that at this point, we should table this item until we have a formal FPPC letter back from Sacramento indicating that there is no concern with a conflict regarding a staff member recommending that the council approve outside engineering services from the employer that he used to work.
Long time. He worked for him a long time. Jay, you own any stock in AECom?
I do not.
Do you have anybody, any relatives working for AECom?
I do not.
No. He's been here for a long time. I can't, I can't, I can't recommend, but we sent him...
Okay.
I need this for three months so we get a formal advice.
I am a council member, and I am raising my concerns as a conflict of interest.
What based on what? What's the basis? It's gotta be a financial...
There is, there is the appearance.
Okay, what is the financial?
Mr. Schroeder, that is your job, I am not an attorney.
There is no financial...
Well, I am requesting you proceed with a request to the FPPC and ensure that there is not a conflict of interest with a staff member who used to work at a company that is now requesting that this council approve a contract. And I'll tell you, these numbers, you know, thousand here, thousand there, 1,200 there, I mean, these are not small numbers related to any of this work that will be done on this menu.
It's all, it's all what the staff is charging.
I understand that. I am concerned...
I understand your concern.
I'm requesting that you obtain an FPPC letter, an advice letter, indicating that we do not have a conflict of interest.
That'll take two months.
I don't care if it takes six months.
Well, if the council wants...
And because, let me tell you what, we've just heard from numerous people in the audience talking about, you know, us being accountable to the people in the audience. And you know what? We need to be accountable to the people in the audience, and when concerns are raised to me from my constituency, I am representing them, Mr. Schroeder, and I am asking you right now to please proceed with an FPPC advice letter to ensure that we do not have a conflict of interest as this council is seated. And if it takes two months, so be it. We need to make sure that this body is not liable for something that could potentially come out of a transaction between Mr. Schlosser and AECom pertaining us, the city of Tatchee, assigning work to this entity.
Well, I'll have to take my direction from the council on that.
Well, and I suggest that we have an immediate vote, we make an immediate agenda item, and we proceed with a recommendation that we provide an FPPC letter from Sacramento regarding this issue. And that's my, that's my motion.
You don't need to put it on the agenda, it's already on the agenda in the sense that you're being asked to approve a contract. You're asking to delay that so that we can have an FPPC inquiry.
That is correct. That is correct.
You can do that on this agenda item.
There we go.
And you made a vote. I'm sorry.
I sure did, ma'am.
All right. Do I have a second? Moved and seconded. All in favor to contact the FPPC regarding this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you.
I made a motion on staff's recommendation. Jay's been our engineer for a number of years, and it's not very, it's not uncommon to get an engineer from a good firm. And if we did business like this, where every time we hired somebody and they came from somewhere else, we'd have to hold off their ruling, this is what you call big bureaucratic government at its worst. It's getting some bureaucratic organization to delay a very simple arrangement. We have engineering staff that does the work. When they get overbooked on stuff, it gets farmed out to an engineering firm at the very same rate that our staff pays. The citizen, the applicant, no matter who, is not getting a different rate, no matter what firm we use. And we've been using AECom over the years with Mr. Hetty here on the council. And I don't know why it's all of a sudden an emergency. But at any rate, my motion is to approve as presented on the, from the staff.
And Mr. Smith, just one other comment for me. There is no hesitation whatsoever when Mr. Schroeder comes back at me as a business owner in this community and tell me that I've got a conflict of interest and throws an FPPC letter at me. So there's no hesitation with that. But I'll tell you what...
I don't agree with that.
Oh, come on, come on.
You asked for it.
Read the documents, Mr. Schroeder.
I suggested you ask for it.
Well, let me tell you what.
No, no, let me tell you. You are the city attorney, and we are the folks at the council.
You work for the council. And until you understand that, we're gonna continue to have dialogue.
Fired. And I don't know if you had enough votes that was, that Hetty made the vote on that motion.
Yes.
I didn't hear enough.
Three to us.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was it four to one or was it three to two?
Did you vote? Yes? So it was three to two. Yes, I'm sorry.
Pardon? No, the first vote was three to two on the first...
When we voted on going to the FPPC...
She seconded the motion and voted no on.
Okay.
Well, but I don't know whether she voted for it. Did you vote for that motion?
All right. I'm sorry that I...
I thought you voted no on. So it was four to zero on the first toss of the vote?
Okay.
So now Mr. Smith has a motion.
Do I have a second for Mr. Smith's motion?
To accept the amendment to the hearing?
Yes.
I second it now, ma'am.
It's been moved and seconded for a motion as presented by staff. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Absolutely no, due to the fact that we have not performed our due diligence.
Let the record show it was a four to one vote, please. Number seven.
Madam Mayor, council member, the second item I have for each unit is a development agreement with Greenbrier Capital Corporation. Greenbrier, I'm sorry, Greenbrier Capital Corporation. They're seeking to develop a housing development on approximately 138 acres in South Valley, Little Garden, West of Tehachee High School. The project has applied through the city's planned unit development procedure, and the applicant participated in their first public meeting with the city attached fee planning commission on February 11, 2019. They received approval on the general acceptability and intensity of land uses proposed and their interrelationships. So with the approval of the planning commission at that stage, city staff is now required, under the zoning code, to process that application, which includes notably the preparation of a California Environmental Quality Act Environmental Impact Report, EIR. That's a sizable document that costs, is likely to cost over $100,000. Obviously, the city does not want the taxpayer to pay for the expenses associated with the preparation of that document, and so we prepared tonight for you a reimbursement agreement between Greenbrier Capital and the city of Tehachee to govern reimbursement of those expenses to the city of Tehachee. And so this agreement outlines the city's responsibility to produce the document and their responsibility to reimburse us for that activity. Therefore, our recommendation is that we recommend that the city council approve the agreement with Greenbrier Capital Corporation for the development and reimbursement of the Sequoian Environmental Impact Report review for the proposed planned unit development. If you have any answering questions?
Any questions on this item from the audience? Counsel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Mr. Garrett, could you please verify to me whether or not items six and seven are tied together? Will we farm out the work associated with preparing this PD or EIR or C4 or whatever you wanna call it? Will any portion of that be farmed out to AECom, the engineering company that I just presented?
Do you mind if I ask? The sequel document, no. The sequel document, we have an on-call agreement that you all authorize with two different environmental consulting firms that allow us to utilize one of the two of them for this effort for obtaining a scope and fee from Crawford and Bowen, environmental consultants for that effort. As to, well, that's all there is to talk about, because there's no approval of the project at this point. The sequel document has to be prepared. They have to go through the whole process and then re-present their project completed the planning commission. The agreement that was just approved, the amendment with AECom, I suppose could take effect if, at that final approval of the project and after that, engineering documents started getting prepared. And perhaps at that point, staff would need to utilize the excess services of AECom. So to answer your question directly, no. None of this work that we're discussing on this item will go to AECom.
Mr. Garrett, I did hear a yes in there, however. I heard a no, but prior to that, I heard a yes. But it could be, and could be, is it yes? No means no. Could be means yes. So in clarification of what we're talking about, we could, we just approved an issue to where we can go back to AECom as an outside engineering firm, and we can present to them a menu of things that we would like to have done. It'll be reimbursed back to us, or the entity pays directly to AECom. But now we're gonna, we're gonna provide a subsequent line item here on the agenda where we can turn around and potentially go right back to AECom to satisfy a requirement that we've previously approved and at an entity where our city engineer previously worked. And I stand behind my concern as with item number six on item number seven.
Let me apologize if there's some confusion.
Let me, let me... Number six is for plan check services. So if somebody approaches the city and they wanna build a patio cover, Walmart Supercenter, or a residential structure, let's say. Number seven is purely an approval to get reimbursed from Greenbrier Capital for the environmental impact report that we're going to produce for the planning commission and the city council that will either allow, not allow, or allow with conditions the developer to build this proposed neighborhood. Now, when, in the future, and this is a couple of years down the road, I'm certain, if they're going to build a structure, they're gonna come to the city. Now, certainly, we do have the ability to do it in-house, or hire AECom, or maybe somebody else at that point to help us if we need prevention services. But number seven is purely a reimbursable agreement so that we do not use taxpayer money to produce an environmental impact report.
That's all. So, Mr. Garrett, I have your absolute assurance that in this process associated with number seven, that we will not use AECom for any of the aspects related to this item.
We will not use AECom for the environmental impact report.
That's reason that... Or the EIR.
Correct. It was never the intent. It was never the intent.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
Do you have proponents from the council?
Thank you, Jay. It was very clear to me that you have two engineering firms that are environmental firms.
They're not even engineering firms.
They are environmental consultants to prepare these two documents. It had nothing to do with AECom, and thank you for your report. You did this fine. I'll make a motion on staff's recommendation that we approve item number seven.
Do I have a second on that motion as presented by staff?
Oh, seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I will abstain.
Please let the record show it was a four to zero vote with one extension. City managers' reports? Nothing. All right, council member reports. Mr. Davies?
I have nothing, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Smith?
Just wanna thank everyone. Everyone was cordial tonight. I think we had positive comments, and there were negative comments that were allowed to be presented in a very easy manner. I hope you feel that you were comfortable this evening to do that. That's the way the process works. Not everyone will agree, but I think we are very willing to have inside of both sides of any position presented. And thanks for all the comments, and that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a couple of questions, oh, sorry, a couple of comments tonight. One being, Mr. Garrett, could you please explain to me where we can find the statistics related to our code enforcement efforts that we undertake in the city? And I have said in the past, and then I'll say it again, one of the most important people that we have working for our community is actually standing in the back of the room back there, Mr. Aaron Price. He does a fantastic job. He does stuff... I think it would be beneficial if we could somehow understand his efforts a little bit better. And I've gone through the weekly statistics, and I don't see a line item for what, unless it's blended into something else. I would appreciate if we could see something that would allow our community to understand the efforts behind what our code enforcement guys are doing.
Would you like me to answer?
Yeah.
In the weekly statistics, his activities can be blended in with those as part of citations, administrative citation, et cetera, when you get your weekly report. So if you'd like that broken down further, it'd take a little more staff time to break that down further, and I'd have to pass that to Aaron and Tommy to do so.
Mr. Garrett, I think that if it's not too burdensome, I think it would benefit the community because, again, first-line guys that are out there trying to clean up things. And I think it's valuable that we understand what their effort is and what their effort results in. And I think if we could, if we could work towards a line item on that report, I think the community would benefit from that.
We can do that. We certainly wanna make sure that we provide the information that is appropriate and legal to provide, but we can certainly work on that.
Yeah, thank you, and I apologize. I'm not trying to make work for the chief or for Aaron, but I think it would be an unofficial thing. Thank you on that. One of the very first items that I brought to the council immediately after being seated in late, actually, it was December 20th of 2016, was our need to video broadcast our meetings. And I actually heard a little bit of conversation earlier before the meeting started between Mr. Budge and somebody in the audience. I think we should take the extra effort and do what it takes to make sure that our broadcasts are done live. And what that does is it puts credence behind the discussion, and it also eliminates any concern that a recording is lost, a computer crashes, and we could potentially lose meetings. So because the council voted on a live broadcast, and we need to bring this back to the council as a formal agenda item and provide some funding to give Mr. Budge what it takes to amp up our broadband or our bandwidth or whatever it's gonna take to make that happen for the public, I think we need to do that. And I appreciate that there are concerns with, this building's terrible. Your cell phone doesn't even ring here half the time. I'm not sure what's going on, but I think that we can fix that. There's a lot of technology out there, and if this council needs to have it as an agenda item going forward to where we can get that information out to the people, I'll leave it to you, Mr. Garrett, to decide if it's something that can be done under your office for the video production of the meetings, or if you feel that it needs to come back to the agenda as an agenda item where we bring some additional funding to the process and make Mr. Budge, make his life a little bit easier, not trying to get that out there. And, Madam Mayor, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to let people know that there's some progress in my district as far as cleanup. I've noticed several properties being cleaned up, new landscaping, and so on and so forth, and that's totally by the owners. That has nothing to do with us. So that's good to see. Also, and I think you chuckled when I said the potholes are being filled, but I'm seeing the potholes being filled, and I was hearing people who have had to replace front ends and whatnot from the potholes. So not necessarily in our, in the city. They could be anywhere. But those are the two things that I have noticed. And I also thank the people who conducted themselves in a reserved manner and a polite manner towards the council. We appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you. No other comments. We're going to go into closed session. We have three items, and if any votes are taken, our attorney will come into this room following that meeting and report. Thank you.